The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public. The sandbags are outside of the facilities and are available 24 hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following. The Road and Bridge Fabens Warehouse located at 1331 North Faben Street in Fabens, Texas, 79838. The Road and Bridge Canotillo Warehouse located at 191 Canotillo Avenue in Canotillo, Texas, 79835. And the Road and Bridge Montana Warehouse located at 14698 Van Lane, El Paso, Texas, 79938.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.html to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor felony and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for El Paso County Commissioners or El Paso County, Texas. Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy. In 2015, the County of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast, the number two, coastrx.com. Happy savings.
Did you know the County of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information. Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Good morning. Today is Thursday, September 27, 2018. Commissioners Court is meeting in special open session. Judge, is there an order you'd like to go in this morning?
No, sir, we can go ahead and just get the order assets.
Okay. Item number two pursuant to the Texas Local Government Code Section 114.023, 114.024, 114.025, and 114.026. Please accept the attached presentation and the interim financial report from the month ended August 31, 2018. The interim financial report is located on the intranet at http://epcounty.com/auditor/pubbliations/monthyrapports.html. Good morning, Mr. Ratabeck.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners, Jim Ratabeck, Financial Reporting Manager Senior for the Financial Managers Office. Let's get started with this. We have our condensed financial report. This will be published in the newspaper this coming Sunday. We found this little problem is the El Paso Times has now extended the time they need to publish these things in paper. So we were not able to make it in for last Sundays, and they didn't bother giving us an advance notice on that. So we have to publish it in this newspaper.
Good question.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Ratabeck. Does this impact us in any way, in a negative way by pushing it back?
It's required to be published before it's presented.
There's no legal impediment?
No, it's just a published time.
Just because there seems to be some noise and activity out in the lobby if you speak up a little bit, just so that others can hear, thank you.
All right. Our revenues have been flowing pretty good. We have a total revenue of $16 million for the month, $429 million for the year. General fund, we had $10 million revenue for the month, and $254 million for the year. And this is as of August, so we still have one month left in the year. Breakdown of our revenues is property taxes. We had a change, positive change over the prior year of $4.10 million. Sales and use tax, we had an increase of $1.5 million over the prior year. This year, we did have tax rebates that will show up in our September report for $1,116. And those were done as a fair or fiscal year 16, 17 rebates. Other ones with interest were $817,000. Miscellaneous revenue, we are up $231,000, and other financing sources, $225,000. Compared to our budget, as you can see, property taxes were at 99% collected. Sales tax were at 97% collected. Motor vehicle sales tax at 95%. Our big changes, our charges for service were 101% over budget. Interest were 128% over budget. Miscellaneous revenue, 129% over budget, and other financing sources, 140% over budget. Revenue is where you want to see the yield of the budgets. Revenue collected as of fiscal month 11. We are 91% of the year expired, and as you can see, we are collecting 96% on our revenues. We are property tax 99% and sales tax 86%. Sales tax comes in every month. Expenditures are year-to-date. We are at $541 million for expenditures. We have $41 million for the current year, I mean for the current month.
$571 for, right?
$571 for the year-to-date, $41 million for months-to-date. As you can see, it's pretty much in line with what we had last year. We're slightly above on our year-to-date expenditures, but months-to-month, it's falling significantly than we had in prior years. Our biggest expense is personnel salaries and benefits. That is, for this year so far, is $184 million, up about $5.8 million compared to the prior year. Our other operating expenditures, our total operating expenditures for general fund is $237 million for this year compared to $227, we're up $10 million. We're down on transfers out by $3 million there, and that was because in '17, we did transfer late in the year. We did it earlier this year, and we have less transfers this year. Just our percentage of budget remaining, we have expended this year is 78%. We have 21% remaining. Compared to last year, we had spent 79% by this time. A breakdown of our current year expenditures is public safety, we have $46%, administration justice, 25%, general government is 24%, and all other functions are the same. As you can see in this presentation. And this does exclude what we had subside for emergency contingencies. Unbalance. Again, our fund balance, we are pretty much where we have stayed we were in the last couple of years. We expect 82% on our, 82 million on our S and unbalance reserve.
I took a look at the activity through September as of last night. Our encumbrances are up a little bit, about $5.6 million. I'm not sure what additional expenses we're going to have in the pipeline. Still about $4 million in encumbrances, but the net right now shows that we're still up. Revenues minus expenses, we're still up. The revenues are still exceeding expenses by about $4.1 million. But once you take the encumbrances into consideration, we'll actually be eating into the fund balance slightly. I think previously I indicated the fund balance would be anywhere between 78 and around 81, and I still feel comfortable that's going to happen. But there's still so much in the pipeline, three-year in, it's still premature for me to really give you a hard, fast number, but we're still going to end up, I think, in good shape, considering the additional expenses that you all approved that will be coming through. Did you have any concerns, Wally, about anything that's in the pipeline that hasn't been come yet?
It was not coming.
That's a high amount, $5.6 million in come already, so I'm hoping mostly everything has come through.
I'm aware of that.
Sales taxes is, I think it's, correct me if I'm wrong, James, but it's probably the highest we've had in a long time.
It is the highest.
Right now, as of September, it's $2.3 million, 5.47%. We still have one more payment coming in, and my understanding is that the excess sales tax, we were originally planning on a half a million dollar excess, and it's dwindled down to, I think, less than $50,000.
If it's actually now, we will have no excess sales tax transfer.
So it's dwindled because of the changes in the actual revenues. And the reason it's changed is, you would think that more revenue we receive in sales tax would increase that excess. Well, the reason it's not is because we've had a higher level of 3D1 rebates out of that fund, and the law provides that your revenue calculation, the excess, is reduced by the amount of sales tax that you abate. So that has reduced the amount of excess that we would have to transfer out of the general fund. So we're not actually doing a double reduction to the general fund.
Yeah, Wally, hard to imagine budget and fiscal policy. The last time sales taxes have been this high was probably in the early 90s when we were seeing 6% and 7% sales tax growth. So it's a good indication of how resilient El Paso is right now. If the next month comes in at a similar increase for the fiscal year, gross sales, taxable sales in El Paso County will hit $9.6 billion. That's the highest gross sales we've had in the last couple of decades, and if it keeps that pace for fiscal year '19, we're very likely to hit over $10 billion in taxable sales in El Paso County. And that's a pretty significant growth.
It's really great news and it's optimistic, but we always wonder, you know, how long is it going to last? You know, people look at the stock market, the highest it's ever been, you know, there's always a correction. So I think El Paso County, the economic indicators are very good. This community is growing. You see all the construction, and we've had years where the construction was projected as being flat. Well, it hasn't been flat, and the economic growth of this community is growing. You all have taken steps to try to address infrastructure, and it sounds like it's going to just continue. So we'll just be monitoring it cautiously.
We are currently working on our cash flow projections for '19. Right now, I'm estimating for the general fund, about $70 million for the first three months in cash flow. That is without having accounted for our excess, our sales tax inflows, and any property tax inflows.
So your $70 million is a gross outflow?
That's a gross outflow.
Commissioner, please.
You know, I don't think we were previously aware that regarding excess sales tax, that anything that we may have where we abate taxes actually comes from that, so might erode that excess sales tax that would otherwise go to the state.
No, the excess sales tax goes to debt service.
I mean, to debt service.
But I had that clarification myself. I actually questioned it whether we should be doing that, and it's specifically noted in the statutes that, when you do your copulation, the actual amount of sales tax you collect is reduced in determining what the excess was from the prior year. So it actually brings your current sales tax down in comparison to the 12-month period that we compared to.
So if we didn't have that reduction from the 3D1s, it would have been about $500,000? So what was it?
If we didn't have the reduction for the 3D1s, we'd be probably transferring about $1 million to the.
For the use of reduction in debt, which is required by statute.
So $1 million is what we have excess over previous fiscal year?
Yes, and that's eaten up by the 3D1s.
Yeah, we've had historic increases, so even though, you know, right now, the increase is about, what, $2.5 million on the sales tax? That just goes to show you that we've been ratcheting up every year, so it's looking good, but yeah, the sales tax rebates was helpful in us identifying that we should not be, that we should be negating the refunds out of the calculation. Otherwise, we would have put money in debt service that we should not have. We would have, you would have been hit twice by reducing your sales tax plus moving an excess into the debt service fund. So it was a clarification that we were concerned about, and we validated it, and we're doing it the right way.
So in previous years, did we not do that?
In previous years, we did do that.
We have, okay, not to the extent it happened this year. It was a big amount.
This year's extent, you have to remember, is somewhat of an anomaly because we had multiple years filed for sales tax adjustments for the office.
It's kind of a catch-up, I think.
That was a little extraordinary. In a normal year, it would not have been here as high.
And the other factor that does affect it is last year, we had no sales tax rebates. This year, we had one for two prior years.
There's somewhat of a timing issue.
Yeah. And so that did give us a little bit of a mind effect.
Commissioner, please.
I'd like to follow up on something that Commissioner asked about. On one of your slides, you showed debt service at about $79 million. Does that include the payments themselves plus interest?
One that shows the.
About $79 something.
This one? Okay. Reason for that is that includes, we did in December, a refund on about $55 million. We issued debt for $50,225. We had a $9 million gain on that. We refunded as approximately $59 million in debt service.
So you'll see that on the revenue side, too. It's watch.
If you look back.
Get the proceeds, and then you disperse it.
That's the one that we talked about and voted on?
Yes, December of '17.
If you see here, this is on the revenue, there's your $79.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, it causes operations in our trends when we have those things happen, but for debt service and the same with counter projects.
Yeah, I brought that up as well on one of the. Yeah, as I, I brought that up as well, on one of the, during the community meeting with Commissioner Haggerty's group this week, it was noted, you know, Commissioner said we have the highest budget we've ever had this year, the last budget, and then we have this week, brought us over 501 million dollars, but normally, had we not had a, a bond refunding over $50 million, we would have finished the year probably in that 455 million dollar range, which is about where we'll finish this year.
Commissioner?
And on the budget utilization slide, where it was, I think approximately at 78%, is it possible in future years, or future presentations, you could let us know, actually, with a, with a dollar amount, is, I don't know if I'm missing it somewhere, it's, it would be pie chart that you had towards, there you go.
Okay.
Because what, what does that translate to, I guess, in a dollar amount?
And this one?
The, the one you had previously?
That's, that's still two months to go in the budget year.
Right, right.
You still have two months.
Well, one month.
One month. That is, our current expenditure is 237 million out of our total budget.
What was percentage change, 70 or what?
78.89.
So on the, on the general fund budget, which I remember on that is?
Minus 30 million, yeah.
Is, is, are you taking the 30 million dollars out of that equation?
Well, I told mine, I told staff, but when they do the, the ratios, they need to reduce that 30 million, because that's, that's a contingency that'll never get spent unless there's an emergency, so it's not a true variance that you should be factoring.
So ideally, the budget was, without that 30 million dollar contingency reserve for fund balance, was 297 million dollars, so that represents a 238 million spend on the 297 gross budget. Of course, we have one more month to go, and then the accruals, that we will recognize expenses till, till about 60 days after we close the fiscal year, so right around Thanksgiving is really when we know where the dust settled on the FY18 expenses, but yeah, I, I think that would be a, a good, a good add to the monthly presentation to show them what the gross budget was.
We'll, we'll try to, I know sometimes we hold off on the September because of the accruals going through, but once the payroll accrual gets posted, then we'll come through with the preliminary September report to show payrolls posted, just to kind of give you an idea where the, where the variances are, understanding there are still expenses that are going to be posted.
Your, your encumbrances and purchasers that you had outstanding will account for most of those expenditures, it's your direct expenses that will, will negate a total, you know, a total true expense. So utilities that we spend directly, we have about $5 million a year in utilities, so about half a million dollars a month wouldn't be in that number, and then other direct expenses like attorney vouchers, professional services, things of that nature, so it's probably about a million dollars in direct expenses.
So if there's a projected still, you know, anywhere between 79 and 81 million dollar fund balance, and this doesn't include the 30 million, does that mean we're anticipating to have a, unexpended funds in the neighborhood of like 50 million?
With, with the 30 or without?
Plus the 30, to, to come up to roughly 80 million?
Right.
That was a question I had, I know we talked about that during budget and what the carrier would be, and we were projecting between 79 to 81, maybe 82, but we're still far within that range, it sounds like.
Sure, yeah, I'll send you real close today.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Perfect, thank you very much. Um, do we have to move to accept, yeah, I make a motion to accept the interim financial report as presented. Second. Commissioner Beddoes?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stell?
Aye.
Commissioner Haggerty?
Aye.
Judge Swob?
Aye.
Motion case. Item number three, receive a presentation from the Economic Development Department on a draft economic impact fund policy, and provide feedback or recommendations to the department regarding the draft. Morning. I don't like to feel too short there. Ready? We write that into the, good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning, Attorney Judge.
We're taking you on this with Economic Development.
And joining me is Arturo Marquez.
Morning.
And I believe Myra joins in a, in a second there. We bring to you, for presentation purposes only, is the, a draft of the Economic Impact Fund Policy, and I want to make sure that we start off understanding that this is like a very first draft, it's, we don't think it's ready for, for you all to adopt, even if you like what we're presenting here, but I think it's important that we, we take a good look at this, and kind of reflect on what's being presented and how we can improve on it, that's the way we see it, and, and we're here to ask you for your feedback, it's very important that we take it, because what we don't want to do is go too deep into it and realize that that's not what you all want, so that's why we kind of took a very broad stroke, and that's what we're presenting to you.
So, Myra, did you want to sit up?
Thank you.
Morning.
Yeah, Myra, in the Economic Development Department.
So the first thing we, we brought is, we wanted to take a, take a very broad look at what's going on at the national level, and we, we kind of started off with the presentation that the students from UTEP had done through Commissioner Beddoes' office, and it was a good starting point for us to look at nationally, there are several states doing this, there are several states that have a kind of a closing fund, and each one kind of targets pretty much jobs, that's what we see, the Texas Enterprise Fund, that's one of the most discretionary ones, but I think it's the largest state discretionary fund that's out there, and they have their own formula for doing this, but we, we wanted to take a little bit more detailed look, and we said, well, what are municipalities across the, across the state, across the country doing it? What we found out is that there's not a lot of municipalities or local governments doing it, we think that there's thousands of local governments, I mean, we found some here, and we've given, we're providing you with some examples of several, most of them outside the state of Texas, that have some type of closing fund, and they have it for a very specific purpose. I'm going to also ask staff if they, they have any new comments, please, let me know. So here, we give you some examples of some municipalities and county governments, Montgomery County one, the city of El Paso has their own, what they call their Impact Fund.
Do you know what that amount is, if they set aside for their Impact Fund, the city?
So we reached out to the city, but they were unable to disclose a specific figure, they were unable to disclose the percentages of how it's discussed.
I'm sorry, they didn't have it available, or they didn't want to?
They keep under wraps on, on that specific number.
We don't think they're able to, I see, it's their public fund, there's, it's not, it has to be disclosed somewhere in their books.
That's very surprising. Oh, we definitely try out to, to reach out to them again, and try to get that specific number.
Okay. We'll have to backtrack with the city and try and find out what that exact amount is. I do think that there's something out there, but I guess they just want to kind of like keep it very low-key, for some reason, our economic development partners, but I think that it is, it's got to be public, because there are public agencies, so we'll, we'll follow up, let's give you that. There's some other ones here that you, you see here, what is it, the Cal County in Georgia, Pennsylvania, Oregon, and Virginia, so, you know, across the country, there are some county governments that do have a, a specific fund, a very, very specific purpose that they're looking at using these, these types of funds, and I, and I think what we found and what we're collecting is that we really need to see is, where does a county see its Impact Fund having the most impact, so this is why we came up with a, a very broad stroke approach on where we want to focus our economic impact fund dollars. And so we started by identifying key target industries that we felt were important for the county, and those come, both online with what Borderplex, second, Borderplex Alliance Strategic Plan calls for anyway. The thing, the other thing we looked at is coming out with some parameters for eligibility, kind of, kind of set up some boundaries for what, what you all might want to consider is, and, and putting a, a level floor here, a minimum investment of $2 million for any investment to be considered on the economic impact fund, with certain exceptions, and we mentioned those below, renewable clean energy, and entertainment venue, mixed-use development, research and development, agri, agribusiness, and healthy food financing initiatives. And we're going to get into these a little bit further, so just, if you have questions on, on these things, we're also taking your input as we go from slide to slide. So some eligible target industries that we think seem to obviously fall in line, following what we just mentioned, is those six that are there, and the target industries. The intended uses, I think this is where we, we want to be, we really would like your feedback, is the intended uses, where do you see a falling, now, we came out with a long list, but it's certainly not a definitive list, we could narrow it down if you like. Land acquisition, when we talk about bringing in a blue chip project, and, and I know in our close discussions, there, there's been opportunities for, to discuss some key projects that are, that the, the region has seen, that we'd like, we would like to be in the, considered as one of those companies that we want to attract to El Paso, land acquisition is one of those that could come into the picture. Infrastructure expansion, when we talk about infrastructure expansion, we're looking at helping them with major road infrastructure around a development. Relocation costs and installation, some companies may not, on the front end, have a lot of investment to say, but the payroll, the payroll impact to the community can be very large, so if we're talking about a large employer, say, 1,000 jobs, and average pay of $50,000 salaries, weighted average, you may want to consider looking at covering some of those relocation costs for the company like that. Building acquisition is another one, where depending on the particularness of the project, there may be some merit as to how the county could say, we could help out with building acquisition. Pace projects that do not meet the 1-plus savings, do you want to elaborate on?
Right, so the pace project, the way it works is that they value the savings across a period of time, usually anywhere from 30 years on over, and what it does is, say, for example, you want to renovate a building, and you want to put a new HVAC system or a new lighting system, what they do is they go in there and they, they assess the, the savings value to make sure that the, the loan amount that they're giving is a plus one, meaning that they're going to be saving beforehand, before actually paying off the loan. So in some cases, you know, say, for example, a very dilapidated building, if it doesn't meet that criteria, they're not eligible for a pace loan, and what this, what the intent of this, this policy is that the county can actually step in there and say, okay, we'll, we'll fill that gap in between that, that 1-plus, you know, maximum that they're trying to reach, if that case comes into, enters our hands, and that's, that's a way that the county can contribute into, into specific projects that do not meet that criteria.
Thank you. Let me skip that one, that's already there. The next one is new construction, that's obviously something that you all want to look at, facade and building renovation of a very large structure, job enhancement and training, obviously, we can look at projects that are not very big on the capital investment side, but very big on the human resource side, or maybe because of the type of industry, as our economic development partners are now looking at, is one of the new clusters we're looking to develop in this region, is the fintech industry, and what you're going to find about the fintech industry is that it's not very capital intensive, but what you do find is the value in the, the high salaries, and giving opportunities to college graduates from El Paso, from UTEP, from neighboring universities, the opportunity to seek careers here in El Paso for the, instead of leaving El Paso. And then obviously, gap financing, so that, that is also an area that the Economic Impact Fund can be used for, last but not least, platform equipment acquisition.
Can you explain gap financing?
Uh, so gap financing, again, is a little bit similar to what the pace concept is, in terms of, you know, if a company is thinking about coming to, to locate here, there might be, the best way I can put it is, if two cities are competing against one of them, and there's a bit of a gap, of course, that's.
So literally, it's just, I didn't know there was anything outside of just that.
Exactly, so if, for example, if our taxes are a little bit higher than the city that they're thinking they're competing against, we might be able to go in there and fill that, that gap, so we're at a level ground for competition between the, the two sites, and essentially, that's, that's what it does.
Can I, Commissioner, gap financing is also, when you go to a bank, and the bank usually just lends you 80% of the financing that you need, and then the gap financing is a 20%, and then that's when we, we can come in, and the 20%.
So those are two different definitions, but obviously, gap is something that, that can be looked at as a tool for us to consider using the economic impact fund. Any other questions? So we also wanted to lay out some things that you might want to consider not doing with the economic impact funds, so we put these out here, obviously, you all can take them aloud, some are obvious, funds for the purpose of refinancing a deal, you may not want to do that, the payment of any tax or urges government, political, religious activities.
Can I interrupt just for a second? On A, on the funds for the purpose of refinancing, wouldn't the gap theory fit into that, that they can, they're able to refinance for so much, but there's a little gap that they still need?
No, what we meant on, I'm sorry, what we meant on this one, on this specific plan item, is that for an existing business, obviously, for example, they want to, you know, stay here, they're not able to come to us and ask for this funding simply to refinance their existing business, so that's something that we do not want to do, we, we don't want to become a loan officer at this point, you know, the existing businesses that are already here, you know, essentially, they've already been financed, we don't want to come in and say, hey, we'll refinance what you already have, as a loan out there, and that's a never funded.
That's for existing businesses that are already here.
Right, correct, right, so that's, that's the main purpose, and actually, if you go down through this list, the idea is, is pretty much the same, just keeping that same concept throughout our leases, that we don't want to become a, a, a loan office, per se, to, to what's already here, you know, if, if the business is, is, is not doing so well, you know, we have other incentives that we can do and help them out, but we just don't want to step into that area where we refinance their, their loan.
Thank you. Anything else you know that you find, to us seems pretty obvious, projects that are job-driven, may not be justified by part-time employment, so I think when we consider a project, we're looking at only full-time jobs, there are investments that come in here, projects presented to us that sometimes have a combination of full-time jobs and part-time jobs, the way we, we should probably look at it is, the part-time jobs not be justified.
The, the last one?
The three persons.
What is, what, what does that, what does that mean?
So for that one, for the three people, we want to make sure that we're investing in larger businesses, this is a way for us to avoid the, the high-risk startups of, you know, maybe two people that want to create a, a small business, we want to make sure that, that we have at least some sort of history behind their, their business dealings. So usually, for the most part, businesses that have one or two operators are the, you know, the startups that are, you know, very high-risk, and because this is money upfront, because this will be cash upfront, we want to minimize that risk to the, to the most possible, so by, you know, inputting that land either as three minimum, we want to make sure that, first, we're reducing that risk of, 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 of high, of, of the business dealing, and second, we want to make sure that, that we're incentivizing jobs as well, so this is one way that we can, we can account for that. So I guess to, to, to give a better example, you know, if somebody's spending like a burger shop, most of those places are, you know, usually ran by, by a smaller amount, and we want to try to avoid those, not simply because the risk is a lot higher, and because we are using public funds to, to incentivize these businesses, and we want to try to stay away from, from anything that's, that's high-risk.
Yeah, when we were coming out with these ineligible list of projects, the first thing that came to our mind was, how could we avoid a Pacific Union project, where we incentivize, fortunately, with that project, we didn't incentivize on the front end, and the county did not incur any, any loss of, of funds, you know, they had to meet certain metrics, the first metric was coming up in December, and so obviously, that, that didn't work out, there was no loss. There was no loss of funds to the county. In these front-end projects, there are higher risks in that, where you're using the economic fund to help incentivize on the front end. We have to look at it contractually, how can we put some drawbacks, some contractual requirements to monitor the progress of that investment, of that project as it moves to completion and to actual expansion here in the area. So that's a concern that we had when we came out with these things. But this is just a starting point, you think, is that there's more in on the front end. I think there's going to have to be some more contractual work and due diligence on our part because the risks are higher.
For example, I mean, do you all know that if any of the 381 agreements that we have are with anybody, any company that's just operated by one?
No.
And I thought the same thing too, actually.
So Esperanto Developments, for example, is, I mean, there are a number of investors involved in that, or how's that?
Yeah, and the balance here is between both the people, I mean, this is just one way to do it. Of course, if we go back a couple of slides, the minimum investment amount also contributes to that. So say, for example, an investment option does come in with just three people. We have the option of going back to the qualifying factors, which again, comes at the two million dollar mark. So we're not excluding everybody, which is simply because they have three people in it. But we do have to set some ground, you know, some steps to make sure that we are, again, avoiding that high risk because this will be the cash incentive.
It crossed my mind too that maybe that was a relatively small number. But then I think about companies, for example, we incentivized one recently. It was a gentleman that graduated from Coronado High School, worked out in Silicon Valley, came back. It was a smaller startup, but it was a tech company that had the potential for future growth. And if we had somebody come in with, you know, four or five people that were at relatively high salaries, but in years two, three, and four, they were expected to grow, you know, exponentially, that might be something that we may want to consider incentivizing. So, and at the very least, it's just a floor. So, you know, I'm hoping that anything that comes before the court would be significantly higher. But in that rare occasion, we don't want to limit ourselves from not being able to help that startup company that has the potential to put El Paso on the map. Just starts off rather maker at the beginning.
Yes, and we could see that with the fintech industry. If we move in that direction, we could see smaller companies turn to us. And so we want to give the court the chance to consider them and see what they are and what are the risks for them being successful and obviously the risk of the county. So we just can't take them at face value and say, no, you're not allowed. I think we would be careful and say that at least consider that this one, we would present it to you and then you all, given all the information that we provide, you can make a good decision.
I think that UTEP is partnering with Horizon City. I'm trying to work on a small business incubator in Horizon in regards to aerospace and defense, in large part due to the partnership out of Fabens. And I think that if that takes off and there are local folks or individuals that come into El Paso that want to start a small business, that could be, you know, we don't want to factor them out.
Definitely. We are working also with UTEP to see how we can reshape our chapter 381 incentives policy. And that's another approach we take. So we're having input and to see how we can help out the small business because that's a different niche market that we're looking at. And this may be another tool in our arsenal that we could consider as a county to move forward with. So some of the things that come up quickly to us is the economic due diligence review. We know because it's front end, we have to go harder on our due diligence. And that's only to try to protect the county's investment in a project. Which means is, you know, looking at a business plan, reviewing their business plan a little bit more carefully as opposed to now we're getting an application. Then we ask for additional documentation, depending on what the type of project it is. We may ask for financial documents, business climate evaluation. We look at the business climate in terms of that industry, how's it doing? What are the projections into the future, into the next two years, five years to see, is that a growing industry? If it's a dying industry, well, that's something that you all need to be aware of. At least we need to make sure you're aware. The front-end cash incentive return on investment, we're going to be looking at those things as well during some analysis. And obviously, the applicant management and current research needs is looking at the applicants and management as a whole, looking at the company and see how healthy it is. What news are hitting is we find out in our dis due diligence that there was an issue with this company wherever it's headquartered or in another part of the country. We want you all to be aware of those issues. Could be that maybe they approached bankruptcy or maybe they had a closure somewhere. We bring those issues. And that's what I mean by making sure that we have to do all this due diligence way upfront. All of that made aloud to them so that they're aware as, we're just making sure we cover our bases for the county. Anything on it? Okay, the other thing I want to make sure that you all are aware is there is a second document that was attached as part of the agenda.
So before we move on to the HFI portion, so what is the goal? Because I have some questions on, on the, just some minor corrections, but then also some questions in terms of the numbers. So what are we, and we'll probably talk about this at the end, but what is the timeframe? I'm assuming this is just a presentation, the court will keep this, will continue to evaluate it, maybe provide feedback to you all within the next couple of weeks?
A couple of weeks would be great. Maybe we could have, is two weeks enough? Do you all need more time?
Commissioner, what are your thoughts on taking a look at this and providing feedback? I mean, I almost feel like it would be ideal. I also don't want to prolong us getting this in the pipeline for us to use, but to have another presentation before it's approved so that all of us can see what the changes are that have been suggested or, and then put it on for a Monday. But that's just my perspective, but that would put us out for another month. And I don't know if you want to wait that long. Like, it's not my intent to do that. We could definitely put it on for a Monday in the next two, three weeks and then maybe have Betsy brief everybody on some of the changes so that we can expedite it. I don't know what the court's company is.
I think as we move forward, before we get it on the Monday agenda, that we all are in agreement that this is a good change, this is a good addition. Because we haven't modified it in any way yet. I think that's good. It may take even a little bit longer.
So maybe waiting for the next Thursday meeting to get another presentation before the court on changes.
Really fine tune it.
Okay, so then maybe for the October Thursday meeting, we can bring it back in so we've got a month to share that.
Before we get off the subject, I don't know if you're ready for some of the questions, but should I let you move on?
No, please.
In some of the slides that you're showing, you know, I was on a flight on Southwest Airlines and there's a magazine always in it. And I noticed an ad for Alpine, Texas. I don't know if this, if you envision something like advertisement, a certain amount in that for advertising. And I noticed that on one of your other bullets, I didn't notice education. I didn't see the education part in there, like UTEP. What is UTEP? I mean, UTEP has a lot to offer, some businesses or some potential younger people that are eyeing where to go. So I'm just thinking about.
And you know, those are good thoughts because we certainly don't want to put something out for you all to want to adopt. We're far from being what you see is what we should be trying to achieve here with this impact on those. So your feedback's important and it may be that we need another round with you all to say, okay, this is what we got. Tell us what you like and then make some final edits to it before we present it for adoption.
Actually, if I can just add a little bit of information on the ads. There are specific magazines that do target, of course, specific markets. And for the one for Alpine, if I'm not mistaken, it's one of the industry ones. And what we actually do as a department is we do have some funds that will care for marketing, which we do use for magazines and the like. What we try to do with those ones is we strategize on which magazines and which editions we place them, simply because of the target markets that we're focusing on. In this case, it would be the six target markets that are inclined by borderplex. And what we do is we stay away from the ones that are not related to us, for example, like agriculture and anything like that. We'll stay away from it and then on the next edition, we'll, they talk about, you know, aerospace technology or anything of the like. That's when we approach the magazines and there's an ad on there.
I'm glad that it's going to be in this program somewhere because obviously that little ad for Alpine is working. I mean, we're talking about Alpine right now.
And Southwest, and it is expensive to advertise in Southwest Airlines. I mean, the ones that we target are more site selection, real estate industry, magazines, publications that are out there. And we've been pretty successful. We did get calls and emails when we send out an ad like that, like this last one we did for site selection. And we're looking at two other site selection publications that are as popular as that one to go after and put a place in that. But the timing is also important. What the next ad is going to be is on aerospace and military defense-related industry. So for that one, we're reaching out also to UTEP because of the aerospace program to develop that ad as well. It might take us another month and a half to get it out, but we want to make sure it sends the right message. And we also want to make sure we use the right source and timing for it. But we will make sure to share it with you once it's ready to come.
And that's a great point, Commissioner. Twice on a flight on Southwest, there have been individuals, one from Alamo Gordo ran a company that created air conditioning parts. And they were looking to relocate and they had to be in a certain climate. It was very interesting. And I said, well, have you considered El Paso? And he would fly into El Paso, would drive to Alamo Gordo, do the work there. And I said, you know, there are incentives, it's a great community, the climate's the same, you're right up the street, you don't have to fly in here and drive further away. And so he said he was going to look into it, but yeah, I think people, there should be a way for people flying into El Paso who are going to other parts of our region to know that, hey, you might want to move to El Paso.
My only fear is I've never opened a magazine up those white flyers.
Yeah, and it may not have to be that particular magazine, but it's a great point that the more advertising we do, the more visibility and potential business to capture. And I have several questions that I'll just hold off and send them over to you all over the next couple of weeks to.
Commissioner Bennett? You know, thanks for the presentation. On the two million dollar minimum capital investment, I guess, what's sort of the logic there? Because I know that one of the things that we discussed was, you know, that there are a lot of projects that may not necessarily have a lot of capital investment. I know that Prudential Financial was one example. I don't know what their, I forget what it was. I don't know if you all recall what their investment level was. But I know that the, because their investment was so low, the amount of the property tax incentive, which is the only tool, you know, we had available at the time, was very minimal. I think it was like thirty thousand dollars total. And so when you have a project like that, that has a lot of job, that has significant job creation, but not necessarily capital investment, you know, that was one where maybe this fund might be useful. But I don't know what, like, where did Prudential Financial rank on total investment? Because I knew they were creating six hundred jobs, but I forget what their.
Yeah, and Commissioner, I don't recall the investment amount at this point, but it was only thirty-three thousand dollar investment, I mean, I'm sorry, incentive. So the investment amount was very low.
And it probably was that they had a fairly large footprint, but because they were properly leasing a building, you could consider that as, you know, investment. They weren't even buying it. And at least sometimes if they buy it and they're just retrofitting a building, there is some investment. But in this case, perhaps all that we're doing is leasing. The value is coming in terms of the human resource. That's, that's where we're putting jobs.
So maybe, so maybe something that we could, that we could change in is, you know, have something that states if it's not a capital-intensive project, that they, they're going to pay a minimum or an average of forty-five thousand dollars a year, I don't know. If it's a high-paying operation, then they can also be eligible. Because not all of the, not all of the companies that we incentivize are capital-intensive.
Right, I mean, again, that's why we put some exceptions in, we're just trying to open up that little window there so you all can think about other ideas regarding this. Because we said, well, yeah, we could set a floor, but it may not be ideal for every industry.
And just to kind of add on to that, the reason behind both these numbers, the two million and the fifty percent is that we took the historic outlay of the Texas Enterprise one. And we kind of, we studied how much was given to each project. And we ran across that number of an average of about anywhere from ten to fifteen percent on the incentive that the state provided. So we're kind of keeping within that range. Of course, there are some outliers, both in the higher spectrum and the lower spectrum. But once we're looking at into that percentage type, what we do is, you know, we start looking at the numbers. At a two million dollar investment, you're looking at a three hundred thousand dollar incentive. Now, the way we're looking at this is because we want to give an incentive high enough where we obviously incentivize businesses. We get their attention enough that they won't come to El Paso. But if we lower that minimum threshold of two million dollars, of course, that three hundred thousand is going to decrease. Now, we're setting the fifty percent at that level simply because it's the average. That's the highest that we suggest that the county should go. Of course, that does not stop anybody from going a little lower or, of course, you know, deviating from that number. This is just to kind of give an idea of where that range will fall in here if a project were to come to El Paso.
But I mean, I don't think we're advocating for decreasing the amount of the capital expenditure when it's a capital-intensive project. Just when it's not, when it's not a capital-intensive project like financial services or business services or something like that, where they may be leasing a building, but they're still paying very high salaries. You know, a way to be able to use some of this money to also help them.
And I thought for a second that fifteen percent was, I was like, whoa. I thought about our highest, our highest incentive. And I thought that could be up to, you know, millions of dollars, which we don't have capacity for. And obviously, it's states within, you know, our ability to, but we'll just have to be really mindful, whatever comes to the court, having some clear guidelines as to, because then it becomes a negotiating tool, right? Like, well, what do you want? What can we afford? But, you know, the fifteen percent isn't terrible, but it could be quite high.
Yeah, and I know that with a three million dollar fund, you know, we could get a blue chip project and it could come to us. And obviously, it depends on also the other particulars of the project, you know. If there's other economic development agencies participating, such as a city, that could impact your decision. We share that information with you so that you can make the best judgment.
Actually, yes, I can say something. Yeah, given our constraints of the fund amount, I mean, obviously, we want to be mindful of how much we're able to give to each company and how many companies we want to incentivize.
Yeah, I just, you know, as we think about it, I think it's, you know, the important thing to keep in mind is that, you know, I think the, you know, when we look at a lot of the funds, whether it be Texas Economic Development Fund, our Texas Enterprise Fund, they're very discretionary in nature, right? I think that, you know, the executive branch has a lot of leeway when they make the decisions of who is ultimately going to go to. And so it's, you know, I don't want to certainly restrict it because I, you know, I think when, you know, when we have capital-intensive versus non-capital-intensive, I think our, our property tax incentive has really covered that, a lot of those things. You know, we recently discussed some projects that, you know, and we often measure them whether or not they're capital-intensive or not. But, you know, I think this was intended to kind of cover things that may not, you know, benefit necessarily from a property tax system. The city today just announced, you know, two more direct flights to San Diego and Seattle, you know, which I think is going to have significant economic impact. But I guess the question is, how do we sort of quantify those types of things? You know, if we were to incentivize an airline, for example, to bring a direct flight, you know, that may not necessarily have, you know, it's just, I think, different from the way that we traditionally measure other things of sort of how much property value are you bringing to a community? You know, when it's, you know, bringing direct flights. You know, I don't know if it would rise that two million dollar minimum investment, but I think that's why it needs to just be flexible enough where, you know, whether it be an airline or it be a financial company that's leasing space but bringing a lot of jobs, that there's still be that opportunity to incentivize if it's, you know, worthwhile economically, if there's sort of a clear economic impact. But I think today's announcement by the city is probably a good example of projects that, I don't know exactly what the city is providing in terms of economic development incentives, but, you know, that's certainly, I think.
For those, I don't think that the city did incentivize, but we'll go back and track this. EPIA they did after. I know the EPIA won't directly because restricted by FAA regulation. But the city itself as an entity can try and incentivize correctly, not going through the EPIA. They can incentivize those routes, just like what's happening right now, you know, with the borderplex air service initiative. That could be a project, definitely, that could fit into the economic impact fund for you to consider once we find out what is the total collective from the private sector in terms of the MRG funds. And then they may approach us about, what is the county, does the county see an impact? Well, I think the county as a whole, what a route to a destination, a key city, key important region, where we know we have. where we know we have built in a path or where we've had connections in the past. You know, and there are several cities that I can mention, San Francisco, Washington DC, New York, Detroit, that we don't have direct access to. Yet they're key destinations that for business and for pleasure are important to this community. And obviously, to the entire, the surrounding catchment area, which includes our neighbors to the south and our neighbors to the north in southern Mexico. That's the entire catchment area. It's about a 300 mile area that El Paso International serves. But it's very key to the growth of this region if you're trying to attract and extend further the development of El Paso County.
So kind of listen to the feedback that you all provided. What we could do as an option is whether we're looking at capital investment, what we could look at is at the capital impact which is kind of taking away just their investment and focusing on the impact to the community. That's one option if you want.
Any other questions on this portion? So we'll bring it back in a minute in the mic.
So I think that's the last slide. What we, what we have also is besides the incentive policy, the Impact Fund policy, is the County Fresh Food Financing Initiatives Program Guidelines. Now, this, this, our department did not work on at all on it.
Would be healthy food, not fresh food.
Healthy food financing initiative. Apologize for that. So we got this draft and we put it in there. And Commissioner Stoudt's office has been working also with some nonprofit entities to consider this as part of the, under the Economic Impact Fund. It is in very, in draft form. We have, again, we have not put any edits to it from our, from our side. We wanted you all to look at it for its face value first before we start going into it. We wanted to get your feedback on how you see it going forward, being integrated. From our perspective, I can tell you that we see it from a contract, contract basis, similar to any 381 applicant coming to us. We sign an agreement. We agree to the terms of that. We present it to the court, negotiate all that. And you all, and then we just monitor. We monitor, we value, we report, we report back to Commissioner's Court on the progress of this healthy food financing initiative. It's something to consider. And if you notice that in the Impact Fund policy, we did mention it as well. So for your consideration, but we, we need some guidance on this.
I mean, I would, I would recommend that we also integrate this into the next several weeks for us to look over. Because I did have several questions on this too. And then bring it back at that next Thursday meeting in collaboration with the Economic Impact Fund. So it's all one unified approved package. I did appreciate that, and it seems like it's kind of a three-step process, if I'm correct, where it goes to the food trust for eligibility purposes, then the people fund for the loan application. And then it looks like it would come down to the court for final approval before the amount is issued to the entity. And at first, I wasn't sure that that was in here, but I think the court does have to have a hand in the work that's done and...
I think so eventually. Now, I also have to say that, given the short, we didn't have months to prepare this. We sent it to legal and I don't think they've really gotten deep into looking at this. But we do need them to participate and give us feedback on how this is working.
It's a little, it's a little confusing, but from what, from, you know, what I'm, what I'm thinking, so, I mean, food trust and people fund are just names of organizations in town that, that could be the entities that we're working with. Doesn't necessarily have to be them, but...
I mentioned it on, because they were in the...
Right, right. Yeah. So, so, yeah, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there because we're not, we're not...
So we're getting careful about...
Do you have to bid?
Not doing, not doing a good process.
I, I, yeah, I'm not sure if there has to be a good process to, for, to work with the CDFI. But basically, the process would be that the county would, the county would vet the projects and make sure that the project meets the eligibility requirements for us. And then the CDFI or the Community Development Financing Institution would then do the loan part. I think there was some confusion in the past about the county being the entity that's, that's making, you know, doing the loan part or, or, you know, looking at somebody's credit history or doing that. That's what the, the CDFI would do. So we, we would look at the, look at the, say, you know, a grocery store would come. They would say, they would say that they're interested in this, in this project. They would come to, to the county. We would make sure that they, they meet the eligibility requirements, that they're doing it in an area that's underserved, that, you know, that's, you know, the type of project that they have is, is, you know, what we want. And, and then once we, once we vetted that, then we would send them to the CDFI and they would be vetted financially for, for, for the loan and, and that would be the process. So I just wanted, I wanted to make that, that clear.
I think it would be helpful moving forward to have that outlined very succinctly because this is a very new area. And it is a little confusing, at least for me it is, to understand how it will all work, what the county's role is, where the checks and balances will be. Because I don't, I know that I wouldn't want to hand over authority to be, to another entity to be able to use taxpayer dollars without knowing what those checks are. And what is in place for us to be able to, to make decisions and also take back funding if it's not being used appropriately after they've been awarded. So just, I think that that will be very helpful. And I know legal hasn't looked at this, but we need a clearer picture because I think there's still questions. I mean, we're still clarifying today what's...
It's still a little blurry to us too because, I mean, we certainly don't see our role as a department getting into loan processing at all. I mean, and I know some financial institutions, we looked into that and I said, no, we need people and we don't have people. That's something that I'm very concerned about, certainly not having the tools to be able to do it. But I look at it more from a contractual basis is how we would manage it in terms of coordinating with a nonprofit or CDFI to make sure that they meet all the requirements and vetting, vetting those loans and getting them back so that the court would have approval authority at the very end. But doing it in a very streamlined way where we're not responsible for anything having to do with the loan processing and gathering of that information. That is time consuming.
One of the things that we talked about, and I was very strong, and I'm very supportive of this. I have misgivings and to just pay back on what you said, Judge, checks and balances, some sort of inspection follow-up into some of these actual vendors that say they have healthy food, when in fact, maybe it's low sodium spam or something out there. You know, the first month they say they got good vegetables, and after a while, it, it goes into what I just said. It's pretty tasty.
Frightened? And I, I think part of it too is answering the question that, that just came up is maybe when we come back to the court in a month is, what does this process to set this up look like? Do we have to go out to bid? What that, what that will look like? Because there are all these questions.
Yeah, I had a similar question because there's so many unanswered questions. It's just been reviewed. I mean, I'm sure legal has been involved in the process. I, I don't, I'm not aware. This fund, has it ever been set up in anywhere else? In the counties, Texas?
Cities. We would be probably the first county in Texas, but there, there, I mean, there are healthy food financing initiatives in Austin. And, and I don't know, Chris, where else?
New Orleans is a prime example.
City of New Orleans and Louisiana.
Pennsylvania. So it's been state level.
So I was just wondering if maybe there was some clarification from the county attorney's office, because there's so many unanswered questions. And we want to make sure what we do is legal, obviously, has to be a public purpose. I've kind of looked into it and what's being done is obviously this area needs to be, you know, developed and it's impacted to try to help the area grow and promote economic development. But I wasn't sure where...
I don't think that any research has really been done on this because we haven't understood what your goal is.
And the policy doesn't address the authority.
intend to implement. So it's hard for us. I appreciate that's a catch 22. You don't know what to do until you hear from us, but we're not clear on what we're researching yet. And so anytime, well, I, I just don't even want to pre-start talking.
I mean, it's good to, I think we at least started the conversation and there's this potential for some money to be set aside. But I agree, we need to get a legal review, a legal opinion, purchasing, and just a clear definition of what this process would entail. And then even after that process is put in place, what that other process would look like. So we still have quite a bit of work to do, it sounds like.
Yeah, we do. And we'll touch back again with legal and we'll reach out to purchasing to get their, their input and auditors as well. See what the...
Now, we just all want to make sure that we're covered.
Absolutely.
You're covered.
Absolutely.
And nobody comes back and says, wait, these are public funds. Where's the accountability? Where's the...
Absolutely. I mean, yeah, I mean, I'm just missing... I think we should add that to the list of studies.
We do a study to see if the study makes sense?
No, but I mean, I think there are still a lot of unanswered questions. And so hopefully, we can get some clarity in the next month. But we definitely don't want to make any rushed decisions in ensuring that this money can be used for this purpose, how it'll be used, and what safeguards the county has moving forward. So... Any other questions, Commissioners, on this? If you have any comments or feedback, we're sure that economic development is happy to take those in and we will work toward that, that next month. And it may, it may even be that we need more than that, but at least that's a goal to work with.
Yes, we can work that goal. We'll work expeditiously with all our other departments to give feedback on them as well. Yeah, and we, we could see that. We couldn't answer everything that, that was here. We knew there were going to be legal questions. We need the help. That's what we're asking. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I know that was a quick turnaround to get some of this before the court after budget, but we appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four, receive a presentation from the Budget and Fiscal Policy Department Financial Recovery Division regarding a statistical data overview.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. Molly Hargrove, the Office of Fiscal and Fiscal Policy, Financial Recovery is one of the divisions under my Office of Oversight. As I can introduce the team members who will be making most of the presentation today. To my right, Mr. Derek Hager, he's our Financial Recovery Manager. And Gordon F. Fields.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. Once again, thank you very much for allowing us to be here. Just page two, a quick overview of some of the things we'll be reviewing this morning. We'll be discussing our recovery rate from all production stations and going into a little bit detail on what do we consider a production station. Of course, client value, how do we identify client value and how do we use that data? And then, of course, the Office of Court Administration, the OCA rule changes that took effect on January 1st of 2017, and how those rule changes have affected our operations. And then the new service agreement that we have with the Collections Better Harrison Harris and some data that we, and figures that we have on that. And then last, we are going to go over the First Chance Program. And that is something that we are currently involved in with the Criminal Justice Coordination Department and the DA Office.
As Derek and Gordon have quoted those data, just wanted to let you know that the measurement period that we're looking at is the first nine months of the fiscal period for the last, of this would year for the last three years. So we're looking at October, June activity. So comparatively, we align those up.
On slide three, I've heard any recovery efforts from all production stations. On this particular slide, what we're looking at is, there are four sites that we have throughout the county of Opaux. So we have, of course, our downtown location, which is on the first floor. Then we have our northeast, our location over at Northeast Annex. We have our Mission Valley location, which is over at, in Clint. And then our East Letta Annex, our location that's at the East Letta Annex. We do have, for our northeast location and our east Letta location, we have one individual at those sites. And then we have two individuals over at Mission Valley. So what we do is we monitor how we're doing at each location. And, and we, not only do we monitor our revenue at each location, but we also monitor our individuals that are coming in and seeing with us. Downtown typically tends to be our, our highest site. We see the most individuals. We see the most revenue. We see the most volume at our downtown location. That always has to be consistent.
How does the kiosk play into this? Does it involve?
Yes, sir, it does. And we're actually about to go into that as well.
So kiosk will play into that. And as you see, so it looks like a pretty sharp downward trend with people actually coming to visit us. What you're going to see is an offset of two components that we consider other production stations that are, are not staffed or manned. So what you're going to see is you're going to see a pickup from kiosk. But what you're going to see, a much larger pickup, is people who are not using kiosks but are using the internet. So going online to our website and, and clicking in and making payments from the convenience of your phone, your iPad, or from your home, 24/7, 365. So where you see a pretty dramatic drop off of face-to-face transactions, you're going to see electronic transactions pick up. And we want to talk with you in the later slides about how we want to even increase that one. Make it more customer-friendly and convenient.
And while, to that end, insofar as people going online to renew their license plates and what have you, there's an issue that I don't want to discuss publicly, but there is, and how it relates to SCOTF law.
Sure. And so this, as, right now, of course, our highest volume is our downtown location. East Letta would be second. East Letta does very well. And then Mission Valley would be third, and then Northeast would come in fourth. This is, this addresses what Commissioner Hagerty was referring to a moment ago regarding our kiosks. And then, of course, what Commissioner Leon was going with is, is our web payments and other stations. What do other stations mean? In 2016, we started an effort of working with courts located throughout the county, JP Courts throughout the county, and working with them to take payments even though those cases were referred to us. We were able to establish systems so we could continue to monitor individuals' compliance and ensure that they were successful, but make it easier for them so they could go to, let's say, JP 62, which is out in Mambana Vista, where they could make those arrangements and not have to drive the biscuits to the East Letta Annex or the downtown annex. But yet, we can still monitor them, contact them, and follow up on their success if they're not doing what they need to be doing. And that's what other stations refer to. And then, of course, we have our web. We started a marketing campaign. You might have seen it on the banner, somebody holding a smartphone and, you know, don't, it states, don't stand in line, pay online. And that's something that we've been working as well is pushing web payments. It goes back to providing the service and trying everything we can to increase revenue at the same time. We don't want individual, we provided, we put out a survey to the public and we found out that a lot of individuals didn't want to have to come downtown, pay for parking, have to, you know, cross the street and spend money to just make their payment. So for that reason, we started marketing and pushing the website and encouraging individuals to do that. One of the things that we also do internally in our office is every time someone sits down with us for an interview, a financial review, or payment arrangements, we actually sit down and go over the El Paso County website with them. And we show them how they could actually make their payments online. We've worked with ITD. So ITD could allow other case types to be made online. Before we started this effort, there was only certain case types that were allowed to be made online. We've increased the number of case types to be made online. And if you look at the data for FY16, we don't have data for kiosk because we were still in implementation phase for the kiosk. But if you look at FY17 and FY18, we have seen an increase in the amount of payments made at other stations. We have seen an increase in the amount of individuals that are making their payments through the website. And then, of course, we have seen an increase in production through the kiosks as well.
So I have this as a, as a bullet on, on what's on the horizon, where are we going in the future. But I think it's a good time to talk about it now. And that is, for the kiosk, one of the things we're looking at is what's, what's the next right location for a kiosk? I had Art here in the audience attending today, and we had some offline chat about today's presentation. And one of the things he says he doesn't see is a lot of people are using the kiosk at Ascate. So when we look at the production numbers for Ascate, collection-wise, cash and credit card or debit card strikes through the kiosk for Ascate. So when we look at the production numbers for Ascate, collection-wise, cash and credit card or debit card strikes through the kiosks for Ascate are our lowest kiosk utilization. But one of the things we started talking about is, we have to remember, that kiosk is only available during business hours, 240 days a year, Monday to Friday, 8 to 5. Our other kiosk, and I don't have this data, but the team has, I don't have the summary, but the team has the data to do a little more of a deeper dive. I'm real curious to see, our number one producing kiosk right now is the Northwest Annex.
Every time I have a meeting out there, it's Northwest Annex.
Yeah, Northwest Annex is our number one producing kiosk, followed by Northeast. But those two annexes are available 24/7, 365. So what we want to look at is look at those two annexes to see what is the utilization after 5, weekends, and holidays? So strategically, we can look at where's our best kiosk location. Certainly, the proof is in the pudding, and a kiosk that's available 24/7, 365 appears to be the greatest utilized. I just want to see how much they're being used off-hours and after-hours and weekends. So we're going to do a little bit of a detailed analysis on that. So that next time we give you, and our intent right now, this is the first time we've given you a year-to-date summary, is to give you a quarterly update. We won't eat up your Thursday time, but through our highlights, this is going to be one of the standard reports that we produce for you and for the other entities, just to see where are we at, what's driving our trends. Is there any indicators out there that we can work on?
Yes, sir. Wally, I'm glad you brought the kiosk out because, you know, I've been pushing for those for a long time. If we look at the Eastside Annex, when we first opened up our tax office there, it was a trickle here, trickle there, but since then, it's just exploded. We're even expanding the tax office. I don't know if we're done with it yet, the Eastside Annex, but what I'd like to see, that people can actually get to that kiosk on a 24-hour basis. I don't know that at the Northwest can they actually use it for...
Northwest and Northeast are both 24/7 kiosks. And actually, so you'll see on the last slide, where are we going in the future? That's the annex that we are talking about internally is probably the next annex for us to do. And the reason we want to do it, the county annexes, we own those facilities. It's much more difficult to work with a landlord in a facility that we're leasing to have the third party make an investment, the capital investment of what's the equivalent of an ATM, so to speak, and investing in those, the wiring costs and utilities to bring one of those on-site. So the two annexes, really the next three annexes we want to look at, but I think the first one is, as we move east, is looking at the East Annex. We own the Isleta Annex, and we don't have a kiosk site there. And as we start going further out into the rural areas of the county, I think that's probably where we can better serve the public. Like I said, Northwest is taking off, and I think because of its proximity and the rural nature of its location, we need to look real hard at our East, our Isleta and our connect annexes.
That's, it's almost the biggest chunk of our population is right at the Eastside Annex. But one of the things that we also, I'd like to think about is, and I don't know if it's possible, Mr. Pastorena, I'm glad that you're here. If we were to think about supplying some of our private tax offices that are out there, those satellite offices, because I know they're big producers. Currently, if somebody goes to one of those satellite offices and there's a SCOTF issue, they have to come all the way downtown, make their payment, and go back out to wherever they're going. So is it, does it serve a public interest? I don't know if we can actually have a county kiosk, which is really no cost to us because...
Correct. We do not own the kiosk. If the vendor packs up, they come in and cart away their kiosks. It's a service they're providing to us for the fees that are associated with using that kiosk.
Maybe we look at some of our larger producer satellite offices that are privately owned, that maybe we can get a kiosk in there. First, I think we worry about our own Eastside Annex and what have you. But I think at the same time, we need to be looking at these facilities that generate a lot of business for the basic reason that people don't want to fool with coming all the way downtown or waiting in lines as much.
What you would have to be careful of is the extra fees. These businesses can charge the extra fees, but you're statutorily regulated as to how many fees you can charge for transactions and things like that. So you're, if you're going to have to maintain compliance with the fee schedules and you can't charge extras and things like that. So that would be where maybe the business incentive isn't as strong for you as it is for us.
It would be a clash.
So as I, I think as we look at our future potential utilization of these, is number one, our first priority would be looking at county annexes because there is no other fee associated with that transaction, it's just the kiosk fee. But then also collaborating both with legal to make sure we're on sound ground for the fee assessment, and with the tax office to look at, if we've got 15 private entity contracts, what are our top two or three where we've got the volume numbers look like they may justify going down that road?
As we were researching the kiosk, one of the things that came up, I don't know if it's San Antonio, Austin, they actually have them, and not, not just throwing this name out. Yeah, Safeway or something. That really generated a lot of activity. Just something to, so we don't limit ourselves.
Yes, sir. And we've seen a lot of potential in the kiosk. We've been, just as the website, working on marketing the kiosk. We've put together a tutorial that is offered throughout, on the county website. When individuals sit down with us, again, we take them through the kiosk process. We ask where they live. And then we point out the nearest kiosk to them. At the Northeast Annex, we also have an office, and we have our staff show individuals how to work the kiosk. Because one of the things that we've seen, one is awareness and building confidence in the public to use the machine. A lot of individuals don't really care for technology. But once we show them how easy it is to use it, and they can use it 24/7, even during holidays, we don't see them again because they actually use a kiosk. And that's one of the reasons initially it started off slow, but we've started to see those kiosks take off. And on slide five, this is just an overall FRD, the totals. Again, these are figures that we have actually put our hands on. This is regarding revenues that we have, on cases that were referred to us, and we were doing our due diligence on. We're going to go, as you can see, from FY18 to FY17, there was a decrease of about $86,000. But in the next few slides, we're going to go over a few factors that contributed to that decrease. And, but again, this slide just shows the combination of the previous two slides, from the productions of our locations, other locations, kiosk, and of course, web. We started digging down and finding out what are the reasons for that decrease that you saw on the previous slide. And we started looking at the number of cases that were referred to us. That's something that we can track. And we were looking at and seeing the difference from FY16 through, again, FY17. We also started looking at the number assessed. How, and what are assessments? Well, when someone goes to court and they're given a judgment, they're given so much in court costs and so much in fine. That is the assessed amount on the case. And then preliminary adjustments. Preliminary adjustments is a combination of credit for time served. If somebody is put in jail, and maybe they serve two days in jail, each day in jail is $100 credit. So those credit for time served go against the assessed amount. If the judge waives or dismisses any fees, any waives or dismissals also go, I guess, preliminary adjustments. And then community service. If someone's conducting community service, that also gets deducted from the assessed amount. So then, after looking at the net recoverable amount from FY16 to FY17, there's actually a decrease of about 2% from what we could actually pursue. That has a direct effect on our net average cost per case. What does that mean? Well, in FY16, the average cost per case that was coming into our office was at $435. From FY, at FY17, we're looking at $408. That's an average decrease of $27 per case. Then if we go from FY17 to FY18, we see a slight reduction in the number of cases referred. We see a decrease in the number of, in the amount assessed, but we see an increase of about 17% in preliminary, excuse me, preliminary adjustments. What does that mean again? The judiciary, they're giving more credit for time served. They're dismissing more.
Or they're assessing less. So as you, as you look at the change from the $6.5 million number right here in FY17, we're $800,000 lower on the gross number that our team tries to recover from the county of El Paso.
Is some of this also that a lot of those cases may have been backlogged?
I don't know that answer.
No. On these cases, the courts are pretty good at referring cases to us at the time of disposition. In fact, let me rephrase that. They have to refer to us at the time of disposition because OCA requires it. It is our responsibility to address cases within seven days from the date of disposition. So the cases referred are the cases that are being referred within a relative time from when the court proceedings are over.
But again, that spike, that drop in assessments, dropping down by 12%, and the increase in those preliminary adjustments just lowers our net gross number that we go after. So if all things remain the same and our collection activity was about level, we would have expected it probably to be down about 10%. And right now, we are down 2.2%, which tells me that the team's efforts are still going like gangbusters. But when you're going after a smaller amount, the return on that typically ends up being less also. What's going to drive that even greater is as the team goes into the changes that took place with the state rules from the Office of Court Administration, that too has another impact, and we'll leave into that now.
Yes, sir. And it is a big difference in the net average cost. It's a reduction of $43 from FY17 to FY18. On this next slide, client volume, one of the things that we monitor in our office is how many individuals are we assisting from the public that are coming through our door and we're working with? We're addressing their questions. We're giving them payment arrangements. We're taking their payments. We're conducting financial interviews. For this quarter, we're seeing about, maybe about 9,000 of what we've seen, number of interviews conducted. We want to monitor the number of interviews that we're giving. And how many interviews are we conducting at each location as well? That does take time to do those interviews, and we want to see how, how many interviews are we doing in comparison to the number of cases referred? And then, of course, the number of transactions. Revenue is very important, but we also want to see the number of transactions because we may have a location where they may be making smaller payments, but the transactions may be higher. So we're seeing a higher volume of individuals that are coming through the door. We use these stats to know where to adjust on our locations. For example, as we mentioned a few slides ago, Isleta is doing very well. It has a second highest number of, or second highest volume. So we're currently working on setting up a second workstation so we could send a second individual from our downtown location to the Isleta Annex a few times a week during the high times to further help members of the public.
So what we're doing is, we're looking at the timing of when public's coming in and trying to make that second station active and available during peak times. So we've noticed that Fridays and Tuesdays right now at Isleta are our peak times. So we're going to look at, once we get that second station up and available, is scheduling some staff to be out there on our peak days. That way, we can just improve customer service and try and improve our model line as well.
And this is just an oversight or an overview of the OCA changes that took effect on January 1st of 2017 in comparison to what OCA required us to do in the past. One of the big points that you will see is payments were required within a shorter period of time. For example, court cost was due within 30 days before we started targeting the fine. Probation cases, full payments at least two months before expiration, before the probation term. We would, we used to be able to get the highest payment amount in the shortest period of time, non-provation cases. We're only given six months. Justice of the peace cases, four months to pay their fees in full. Now, if we look at the changes that took effect on January 1st of 2017, the payment amounts are taking over a longer period of time. Someone is able to come in, and if they have, for example, 10 years probation, we're looking at a 10-year payment plan because they're given the duration of their entire probation term. Non-provation cases, we no longer could require the payments to be done within just those few months. They, they're given the same consideration. So we also have non-provation cases where an individual could be given one, maybe two years, to make those payments. And then we also have the standard plan. It's something that OCA requires us to offer. This plan has also probably our highest plan. This does not require a financial evaluation. Someone is allowed to waive their right to do a financial evaluation. Where in the past, we were doing financial evaluations on everyone. The benefit of doing a financial evaluation on everyone is we could fit them into a payment arrangement that they comply with. Now, what they're doing is they're taking the standard plan and saying, give it to me, even though they're not, even though they can't comply with it. And we're seeing a lot of defaults on these particular plans.
So when we see a default from the plan, one of our goals that we had set for eighteen was to increase collections from cases that we refer back to the judiciary. So, and looking and measuring how we achieved that last year, I set a pretty aggressive goal for them. I said, I want collections from cases referred to the judiciary up by 30%. It was an arbitrary goal. I might have no idea how we have done it in the past. But as we started collecting data this year and I started looking at it, I realized, man, that is so out of our control. I can refer, or they can refer as many cases as they want to the judiciary. But if the judiciary doesn't have them on their docket, I can't, I can't expect my team to increase collections if the referred cases aren't being heard. So as you see the next to last slide on here, the last slide on here, who we're collaborating, collaborating with, and our stakeholders, we had a great meeting last week with the local council judges administration, our new executive director, Mike. And I'm not going to butcher his last name because I do it every time, but Kukaro, thank you very much. Met with Mike, met with his team down there in both District Court and County Court Admin. But we brought this to their attention. They're like, we never knew that. We said, well, as we're trying to analyze the data and see what's driving our collections, ultimately, what I want, and I set the goal, and I always set the goal for teams, I want the net collections to be up every year. I don't, I don't want to see a slight slide down. I don't want 2% less. I want 5% more next year. But the challenge with rule changes and not knowing and not doing a real deep analysis on your data has really opened our eyes this year. And had a great meeting again, like I said, with the council last week. And Mr. Kukaro? Mr. Kukaro has already met with the judiciary. And within one week's time, we've already got case settings set in district courts for referred cases for the first time in years. And so we've got one of our district judges said, I'll take those cases and I'll hear them. The nice thing is, and that we believe the benefit, and you'll know afterwards as we measure this, is if we're holding these individuals accountable and having these referred cases heard, that's the judge's opportunity to tell these clients of ours, hey, you've stopped making your payment. Has there been, has there been a change in your employment condition? Are you employed?
Wally, apologies for interrupting. Is there, once they default, is there a time period or is it immediate, an immediate referral?
On the non-provation cases, 60 days. 60 days after they default on non-provation cases, we'll refer them to the court or report it back to the courts.
So they've got, the client has 60 days to come in, make a payment, or then, other than that, it's referred?
That is correct. Anyone who's making an honest effort will not be referred. Anyone who's making an honest effort will not be placed on the default status. If they're scheduled to make $25 a month for the payments and they're making half of that, they're not going to be put on a default status. We're going to continue to work with them. We've said in the past, you know, we've taken a payment as little as 43 cents before. We'll never deny a payment. So these are individuals that have literally just fallen off the map. They're no longer communicating with my staff. They're no longer making any effort whatsoever. And these are, these are the ones that we're referring back.
But for the courts that hear those, that are hearing those referral cases, the nice thing is, is when they get contacted to say, hey, we're doing a status hearing on your collections. We've had, we tend to get defendants or the clients, they're no longer defendants, they're through the system. But these clients tend to contact Financial Recovery and say, hey, can I get back on my payment plan? If I come in and make that, do I still have to go to referral hearing? And the administration of justice, if we can get them back in and they can avoid a referral hearing and get them back on the payment plan, that's a win-win. That doesn't clog the docket and we get them back on a payment plan or something. But I'm real pleased that judiciary was very responsive to information we gave them last week. And we've got, you know, hearings set in district courts for the first time. And I'm anxious to see the results of those, to see if we get a turnaround on this type of activity.
On the next slide, it just, it breaks it down by the payment context that we are now requiring laws. And this just reinforces how the majority of individuals that are coming over here are selected to take the standard plan that we have to offer without, and they're waiving their right for a financial review. By waiving their right to get a financial review, they're default. And then we can see what the average cost... And then, we can see what the average cost is of those payment arrangements. Yes, a standard plan, the ratios on a standard plan is higher. And a lot of folks are not complying for that reason, yet they're still taking it, and it's causing them to default. And then, from '17 to '18, we're providing the same stats. Standard plans are still being taken more than any other plan, they're waiving their rights for a financial review. And that's alarming because we really want to help these individuals, we really want to help the public. If somebody comes in and they want a financial review, we'll be more than happy to provide that to them. And if they're, if that's their situation, we're going to do everything we can to work with them. Again, if someone's making an honest effort, we will work with them. But by somebody selecting the standard plan just for the sake of getting out of the office or getting out of the building, in the long run, it ends up hurting them because they are no longer successful on their obligation, on their court obligation. So, and that's what we're seeing. This is the pattern and the trends that we have been seeing.
On the current firm that we have contract with Harrison Harris, started out very, very low volume, first quarter, a couple hundred cases. Second quarter picked up by six times the volume, about 1,200 cases referred. Third quarter by far was our highest quarter of case referrals. We're up to 6,400 cases referred to the agency. Following that, the gross amount of those referrals started at as low as 82,000 in quarter one. And quarter three, and really the last month of quarter three is when we made a significant stride in the case referrals we're making to them. Total referral value is about $2.4 million. Recovery amounts, quarter three is our highest recovery amount, it's only $6,200. But the referrals we made to them in gross volume in quarter three, they've just only been able to touch for a short period of time. So I anticipate as our referrals grow and the new firm has a longer time to work these cases, we'll see a greater return on those cases being referred. One thing we have to remember is on the new contract, the significant difference is we don't pay the firm on a referral. We only pay the firm when there's an actual successful collection on cases being referred. So that's a significant change in this activity. Last part of the presentation, we'd like to go over, Ms. Lina Vios, we'll go over the First Chance Program. And as you're aware, the First Chance Program was for small offenses for possession of marijuana.
These next two slides will be going over the First Chance Program. Essentially, the First Chance Program is a pre-trial diversion program that was created by the DA's office and the Criminal Justice Coordination Department. Financial Recovery became involved around December of 2017 to assist both of these offices. Essentially, we will process the payments at $100. We will assign participants to community service agencies depending on the site of town that they live on, the hours of operation that best fit their schedule, and of course, the center's reporting practices. We also track the completion of the community service hours, and we also send notices on the 30th day just as a reminder that they have these upcoming obligations that they need to fulfill. On the left-hand side, you'll see the completion rate for the first three quarters of this full year '18, where you'll see that we had a total of 282 participants referred into the program, 171 of which successfully completed, meaning they paid their $100 fee and they completed their eight hours of community service. They also were not rearrested or did not reoffend during that.
So that's a, three out of four individuals that were referred to this program are successfully completing the program. But there's some other underlying numbers that we see a benefit from that are not represented on here. So if you look at 282 cases that were referred to us, prior to this program being put in place, those are individuals that would have been issued a citation, arrested, brought down, gone through our DIMs program, been booked, potentially bonded, and go through a bonding process and released. Just booking, bonding, and releasing costs us in labor $200, $203 for booking, bonding, and releasing. On average, if these individuals sit in the jail facility for three days and having talked to some of Joel's team, you've got some people that will get out as low as 24 hours, others, if you get going over a holiday or a weekend, could be as high as five days. But the average is two to three days in jail. So when you look at 282 individuals for booking, bonding, and releasing, we had a cost avoidance of over $57,000. When you look at if the individuals would have stayed in the jail for an average of three days, our cost last year was $86 a day, three days, 282 individuals, that's $72,000 of guard time, food, clothing that we didn't spend by successfully implementing this program. And then, lastly, if those 282 beds were available to, for another entity, i.e. the marshals to house a prisoner in there, we had the potential of making an additional $67,000 in revenue. So when you look at cost avoidance and the potential for additional revenue generation, this has, besides generating $20,000 in revenue, there's a cost avoidance, another revenue generation potential of about $200,000. So it's, in its infancy, having kicked off in December, there's a lot of potential return from this new program. And then, I'll let you go into the right ground.
So the graph on the right shows the community service hours completed by center. Will you see that Ascarate has been one of the sites that has benefited the most from community service? And that's due in part to their fantastic reporting and accurate reporting, which is really important since the term of these cases is only 60 days. We'll see the next highest was the El Paso's fighting hunger, we have Concordia Cemetery. So a lot of entities from the city are contributing. That equals, they did 100, I'm sorry, they did 1,602 hours of community service, where that translates to about $36,000 or $37,000 in value to the community.
The going average rate for community service right now is valued at about $23.07. So this community received about $37,000 worth of community service benefit. So when I showed this draft to Joel last week, Joel got excited because this is one of the programs that he's responsible for overseeing on the administrative side.
Yeah, if I may, Joel Bishop, Executive Director of Justice and Community Services. Just a few comments on this. What you're seeing, when they see these are the cases referred, these are the ones that actually show up to pay to Financial Recovery. There is another chunk of cases that didn't show up that are not in compliance. And we're working to get more exact numbers with the District Attorney's Office on that. But of the ones that do show up, you're seeing a good completion rate here. And definitely cost avoidance. The other piece that I got excited about too was when we look at our judicial metrics, the cost avoidance of processing one of these cases through the court system. So these are diverted not only from the jails' cost avoidance system, but then the court, I think it's somewhere around $300 per misdemeanor case roughly to run one of these cases through the system. And all of that cost, about $300 per case, was avoided every time they referred one of these cases to us. The other thing that I'm excited about with this is the research project that we have now. We've got a large sample of people that have come into the program, and we've already got good recidivism data indicating connection between increasing recidivism with jail placement. So this is a true jail diversion program. Every single one of these people, as Wally mentioned, would have gone into the jail had this program not happened. So we will be able to look at this and get a controlled group of those who did go into the jail because some are still going there. This isn't a 100% consistent program. Law enforcement has discretion on who they refer into it, so some go in, some don't. We will be able to control the same types of people that went into the jail and those who didn't, and see if there's a difference in recidivism and report back to you in the next year or two. So it just creates a tremendous research opportunity as well. So this is something we're going to be watching very closely from many different angles.
Do they get to pick their community service hours or is it decided by how it works?
They're all required to perform eight hours of community service, or are you talking about the centers?
I'm just, it's because it's saying where it's being done, do they get to decide where they want to go to do it?
Yes, we take their, their, um, into consideration.
We try and work with them. So if there's a site on location that's, and they reside in the lower valley, and we have a lower valley location, we're trying to do it to where it's a win-win, they don't have to take extra time off of work, they don't have to spend the extra money coming downtown to park or, you know, gas money. So we're taking, we're trying to make it as convenient for them so that we have a high success rate. And for the first assessment having a 75% success rate or 73% success rate, I think speaks for itself and there's a lot of benefit. One of the benefits that I didn't highlight on here, I don't have a number on it, but there's real, there's real meaning behind it is these officers who aren't writing citations, whether they're police department or they're SO, that time that they're not spending in the booking line at jail, which can be several hours at a time, is a quicker turnaround, and even that unit on the street and in psych out in our community, you know, keeping us safer as well. So there's officer time that goes into savings as well with, when you look at SO and PD who are referring these candidates to the program. So there's another number I could layer on top of this, that it's just a win-win-win all the way around. But once he has the assessment from the recidivism study, it'll be very interesting to see.
Can you give a breakdown on referrals from these, I'm sure?
I don't have it, but we'll work on getting that, we'll work with CTC.
If I can add something, you said, Joel, that there's a tremendous amount of discretion out there. On those cases that do qualify for this program, but they choose to arrest that person anyway, can you give us some stats or some data on that? What the possible reasons would be?
Sure. So as Joel and I have been talking and the team have been talking is, what we want to do is actually re-engage the stakeholders, our district attorney, who was still, you know, who began the program, but also re-engage in those stakeholders, SO and PD, and letting them know, "Look, three out of four people are making it through." Once we get some recidivism data and if it proves that it's even more successful, that is a huge selling point as to why there is value to those officers considering those referrals and perhaps, you know, making them mandatory referrals, but, you know.
And I think that the district attorney is, or the office is planning on even expanding this to cases that were already arrested and are now being processed, giving them a referral opportunity. That's in progress now, it'll probably be implemented within the next month. So we'll kind of track that separately as a separate caseload, but that could add a potential of another 400 to 600 cases to this. That's, yeah.
It is, and it's good programming, but it does, on our side, there's a lot of monitoring activity that goes on and, but it's, there's a big win to it.
There's still some compliance concerns again regarding, and it may even be processing regarding the point that law enforcement makes a referral, making sure that individual actually shows up. Because again, there is a group that doesn't, and we're trying to figure out why or how we can improve those numbers. And we don't have those numbers reflected here, and we'll hopefully have those reported in the future. But I know that that's something that's going to concern the district attorney's office as well as law enforcement regarding compliance. But that's something that you guys would never see as far as this data goes, so.
What is the reason for, or maybe the highest reason for someone failing? Is it they don't show up to community service, they get rearrested? Like, what is causing that failure?
The reason for the failures is whether they don't make the payment or they don't complete the hours or if they don't complete either the payment or the hours. So we can definitely get you information on how many individuals didn't pay and did some hours or, you know, did some hours.
Yeah, so perhaps what we can do is, you know, maybe a little more front-end counseling on, you know, terms of community service. Maybe we re-engage them to find out, "Why didn't the community service work for you? Was it an agency issue? Was it a convenience matter?" We want to, we'd love to do everything we can to make this as successful a program as possible. But when you're, the interesting thing that I noted right off the bat is you can do the simple math and you can see where we had a failure on community service hours because where you have the rows of sharing church at three hours, that individual failed to finish the program simply because of community service hours. But you can see real easy where you had one person go through downtown management, two people go through Eastwood Heights Swimming Pool. So just by doing the simple math of eight hours or less than eight hours, you can see where our success rates were and where our failure rates were. And so perhaps what we can do is also reach out to the agencies to find out, "Hey, El Paso fighting for 100 or Ascarate Park, what did you do to get the lion's share of successful graduates from the program? Is it an involvement for their perspective? Were they engaged with the individuals and they keep a close line of communication?" So that's something that perhaps we can do is engage those stakeholders to find out what made them more successful than other agencies. Were they more proactive?
One of the reasons I think you see also at Ascarate is privacy issues as compared to a more public, doing your hours, where more public will be, you'll be seen by the public more. I think that's a big key that they go, they choose Ascarate also.
Yes, Commissioner, that is one of the reasons. And some of the other reasons for some of the other agencies, we are no longer referring, on some of them, like Concordia, for example, these participants to that location because these sites are also used by the probation office. And Concordia is used for probationers with high-level offenses. And the coordination team at Concordia doesn't want these participants.
They don't want to do first-time low, low offenders mixing with a much higher-risk offenders. They, in and of themselves, made probation, said, "You know what? We've got a crossover, we want to not increase any potential risk for the future." So that was great on their part, come to us and tell us, "Hey, let's move these clients away." So the next to last slide just shows the activity, the referral volume by month and collections by month. But as I noted, on the $100 payments, you can see here, we've gotten $20,600 in payments today. Closing slide, what our next steps are, and I talked about a bunch of those already when the opportunity was right. But was engage in our stakeholders. We met with the judiciary last week, and the judiciary were incredibly appreciative, that they were very responsive that these cases that are being referred to them is getting them on their docket so we can see if we can get these clients of ours back into an effective payment program. Criminal Justice Coordination, working with Joel's team on the First Offender Program, has proven to be a really good collaboration. Met with executive staff this week from West Texas Community Supervision and Corrections for Adult Prostration and told them, you know, we, when we see someone not making a payment, but you're still seeing them every month, whether they're coming in to make their probation payment or they're doing their drug testing, as we see individuals who have fallen way off the payment plan, we want to coordinate a meeting and then the administration of probation has already said, "By all means, come in and talk to our senior probation officers and let them know, hey, in the northeast, east, the lower valley, in the northwest, here's our, here's our clients who have fallen way off the collection wagon. When they come in and meet with you to pay their probation fees and touch base with you as they're required to as the terms of probation, please collaborate with us, refer them back to us so that we can get them back on an effective collection program." That hasn't happened in the past. And so we're back, we're going to be in their door and meeting with their executive or their supervisory probation officers on a regular basis also so that we are working in collaboration to keep these clients on compliance with collections. Mentioned also information technology. Our new website is pushed out, and our new website is a clean, simple website. It's not clogged with a lot of stuff. But one of the things it's not clogged with is something that we took pride on. You mentioned our little phone example that shows Financial Recovery. So we're going to get back on the banner. Now, we can only run on, we can't, no one, everyone can't run their ads on the banner all year, 24/7/365, although I'd like to, IT intends. But the easier it is and the more out there and convenient it is for the client, we've actually heard back from some of our clients saying, "Hey, the new website, I can't find the payment page. I didn't make a payment this month because I can't find the payment on the website." So what we want to do is re-engage with our clients as they're coming in, meeting with us. We want to show them, click here, click here, click here, click here. It takes four clicks to get to a payment page. Ideally, I want one click, but everyone wants a one-click service. I'd like one click and you're in the budget as well. But working in collaboration with IT, they've just sent us the request document over. So we're going to get back on the banner, it'll run on the banner for six weeks. And at least a couple times a year, we want to make sure we get on the banner so that the clients can see it. And then, we're going to work with the website team as well. They, when I reached out to Chris's staff, Mr. Garcia, this Chris is in training this week, but they've got me responsiveness within the hour, his team were on the phone with me, sending me linkages. So that, again, the more convenient it is for customers, the faster you can go to a smart device to make a payment. The win-win on that is they don't have to take time off of work, they don't have to drive downtown, pay for parking, and then spend money on gas. You know, just that exercise itself. You know, just that exercise itself, if you have to take an hour off of work, pay for parking and pay for gas, that twenty dollars it costs you could have very easily, if we could have do it electronically, had a twenty-dollar payment. So I'd rather get them out of that faster and keep them gainfully employed and make it much more convenient for them. So the other piece of it that we want to work on developing a tool on, and I'd like the tool to be a county tool, but it's just a smartphone app, is a smartphone app that says, hey, the county of El Paso, property taxes, pay them here. You got a delinquent court cost and fine, pay it here. So, it'll go into the queue and be worked on in the order, it goes into the queue, but I'd love to see a smartphone app that where we can accept any payment, regardless of whether it's court costs or fine, or it's renewing your plates, so. And then the last part is, we talked about the kiosk. The next location that we're looking at in particular is the Eastside Annex, with keeping priority on identifying them at our sites as the top priority, and then perhaps looking at what you mentioned this morning and seeing what the feasibility is on looking at our third-party relationship with contract vendors. So, that's our presentation today. We wanted to bring you up to where we're at, but it was a good exercise, because as we developed this first-time presentation, we did a lot of soul searching and about, why the heck are we down? You know, what's driving our numbers? What can we do to make it more user-friendly, make it more convenient? What can we do to engage with our stakeholders, be it the judiciary, the probation department, and any other branch of county services to make this the most successful effort possible and customer-friendly? So, that will take any other questions, for me.
Derek, thank you, you all are doing a great job, a lot of energy, and I like that forty-three dollar, forty-three cent payment. Something is better than nothing.
Some commissioner here owes me thirty-seven cents.
We've had a conversation. Leave it back to you.
I would agree with you, while I go to our webpage, I'm trying to find the payment section, and I wouldn't even know where to go.
So I know now. So what happens is, if you go to our website, and I'll show you, so my team will actually be training, training their clients that come in now.
But I do think there's a value in what you said, and that, I know we're trying to declutter, but I think making it easier for folks who are trying to pay their costs, it should be a tab at the very top.
Sure. So it is, it is a tab, but it takes four clicks. So when you go to services, and when I, and they walk me through it real fast, but you've got to know it's a four-click tab. But it's not inherent that it's, it's where you pay your fines. So services, then you go to list of services, then you go to apply for, fine, get, or pay for. It's pay for, that's click number three. Then, what do you want to pay for? Well, I want to pay for my JP fines. So, it's a four, it's a four-click function, but I said I've talked to IT, they've got their attention, and, you know, there's absolute benefit for customer service, it's just not obvious. So when we got the communication from our clients that, hey, you haven't made a payment, well, I can't find the tab to make the payments. So they come down to us, now we're just having to reengage how it looks, how convenient it is, and IT is a great collaborator with us, so we're going to work hard to get it less than four clicks.
Click reductions.
Yeah, click reductions, but like they say, everyone wants their service in one click. But the thing is, we have to identify from a priority standpoint is, convenience for everyone is great, but what's, you know, my number one goal and most of my objectives on my, on my map fall under financially sound county government. And a financially sound county government is one that can collect the monies owed to the government, but also in the most efficient and effective manner to be the greatest benefit to our customers. So it's, so that it ends up being a win-win. So, it was a, it was a hard process to go through as we looked at higher collections down. But I'll tell you what, with the collaboration of the team downstairs and the various stakeholder departments, it's a good exercise. It was an exercise we needed to do.
Thank you very much.
Should we, the Harrison Harris data, should we be concerned about that regarding the collections so far? Is that very from our views?
I'm not going to get overly concerned with it yet, only because referrals have spiked dramatically in the last, in the last few months. So, but we're going to stay on top of that, because I really do want to see what the turnaround on that is going to be, because I don't want to, I don't want to let it drag out for a long, long period of time. I really want to, they can't collect what we don't refer, and so since our referrals are just starting to spike, we have regular communication with the firm, and there were a lot of changes that took place over the last eighteen months of just from the contract to the forms, to the reporting methodology, and we're engaging with them now on very frequent communication. But I want to give it a little bit of time to mature, since it's really, the referrals are just starting to mature.
Okay.
But we're going to stay on top of that, sir.
Okay.
Great. Thank you very much. Make your presentation.
Item number five, add them to the agenda. Discuss and take appropriate action per local government code one-point-zero-zero-five, Terms of Court Meetings A. At the last regular term of each fiscal year of the county, the Commissioner's Court by order shall designate a day of the week on which the court shall convene in a regular term each month during the next fiscal year.
Sanchez.
Christina Sanchez, Assistant County Attorney. We put this on after Monday's meeting, there was an issue that County Auditor Edward Dion had raised with regard to the payment claims in light of an AG opinion that was issued, as well as an opinion that was issued to the County Treasurers Association. We reviewed that. The issue there would have been when payment of claims needed to be made by the Commissioner's Court, and if such, it would then require the Commissioner's Court to alter their meeting date to Thursdays, or to provide other options in terms of the Commissioner's Court meetings. We reviewed that. Our legal opinion is that it is not applicable, it's applicable to certain counties, and so there's really no additional issue to raise at this point. So, Commissioner's Court did take action on Monday to keep their meetings on Mondays at nine-thirty, and there's no further issue here.
Mr. Dion, you. Okay, perfect. So now action on item five. So that concludes today's agenda. Thank you all very much. Good weekend. It concludes today's meeting at eleven-thirty-seven AM.